Hello everyone and welcome to the Strategic Planning Committee of the Planning Commission. This is our first meeting of January 2021. The focus that we have set out as a commission as early as May 2020 was to look at equity as building throughout Raleigh, to try to bring awareness to ourselves, to developers, to citizens, so that we are all working with the same information and we can again make sure that we are looking at Raleigh from an equitable lens. So that will be our focus during my tenure as Chair. So I thank everyone for being here today, those that were watching or will be watching. We hope that this information is, you find it informative and how you can apply it to today and moving forward, how we view Raleigh. So with that, we typically have our public comment, public comment at this time, but it seems as though we do not have anyone prepared to speak or to give a comment. Just want to do a check in to see if that is still accurate.
We have Pat Butler attending, but they have not indicated if they would like to make a public comment.
Okay, alright, well, Ms. Butler, if you would like to speak, we're going to move along, if we can then hear you at the end of our, of our meeting today, if that's okay. So with that being said, any comments from our commissioners? I'm going to throw it to Ira Mabel, thank you so much.
Yeah, good morning. I happen to know Pat, my guess is she's just attending to listen, but she can chat the host if that's not true today. So, good morning, my name is Ira Mabel, the Conference of Planning Division in the Planning Development Department. Welcome back to part two of our epic two-parter. So when the Commissioner Winters asked us to talk about, in December and January, about equity and equitable development in Raleigh, we're sort of split the, split the topic into two, two different sections. So this time, this was, this was the brief agenda of what we were going through, sort of history of land use in Raleigh, demographics of where we are right now, and then what we've been doing in rezoning in the department and the commission. Pardon me. So once again, these are, these are, slides are in your backup, so I'm not going to dwell super long on any individual map if you wanted to go, go look. They should be available in Board Docs. So unfortunately, the first question, history of land use in Raleigh, we don't really have a lot of great historical digital data, sort of like the way we have now, you know, zoning and future land use and all this stuff on iMaps, and we can run all sorts of statistics on that. We don't have that data really up until the 2000s in any great way. So what I did was, I went, I did go through and find some of the just old land use plans that I could find in our library, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about how, at least we've conceptualized land use planning in Raleigh, starting with the William Christmas Plan. So this laid out our city in 1792, and by city, I mean downtown, so historically, north, south, east and west street, which this grid still mostly exists. There's been some changes, the state has done some stuff with their consolidation, and some of these blocks are no longer blocks. But generally, if you ever heard anyone refer to Raleigh as a planned city and felt like, huh, that doesn't, that doesn't seem right, this is usually what they're, what they mean in that, the original planning of Raleigh by Mr. Christmas. So one note on how we've grown since then, so that plan is the light lavender square in the middle. The label is 1792. Generally, the city has expanded its municipal boundaries northward, that's for all sorts of reasons, not the least of which is that, you know, water flows downhill, so providing sewer service to people generally meant going northward. There's a ridge and a Swift Creek watershed to the south. Certainly later in the, in the 20th century, you know, like Garner existed and Carey existed, so just where the jurisdictions were accounting to expand into. But generally, the push has been northward in pretty substantial chunks over time. Some of these, some of these decades are pretty large gains in land area. That, that stopped around, or in 2012, so the state changed state law to basically, essentially prohibit city-initiated annexations. You can do it in very limited circumstances, but effectively stopped cities from just gobbling lands that they wanted to. So you can see a pretty big change in Raleigh after that state law. We basically now only annex land upon request of the property owner, and, and really, it's because that person wants utility service, either water or sewer or both. So we're not really growing anymore in a big way from a, from a city point of view. It's really just bits and pieces as, as property develops or redevelops. So these are, these are the plans I could find, or the significant plans. I'm going to focus on the, the ones highlighted in green, although some of the other ones are pretty interesting, particularly that first one in 1913. But the, the other, that, that, and also the Central Air Plan really focused on just downtown, but I want to focus on the other three, starting with the General Land Use Plan in 1951, the, what you would think of as a, wasn't really comprehensive, it's actually relatively short, it's only a couple pages. These are some excerpts, really, you know, typical, I would say, of the post-war thinking of planning and pretty pro sprawl, to be blunt, so talks about the capital city needs to be spacious and attractive. And to quote the last bullet there, says we need to not compound human suggestions. So really advocating for single-family land use in most of the city with lots of space in between uses. Also, did have a lot of, talks a lot about preserving the natural assets of the territory. So it's relatively progressive, actually, from an environmental point of view, and was pushing for protecting the streams and other open areas. And then thirdly, also, it talked a lot about state lands at the time, I think the state-owned land were a pretty big portion of the city. This is the land use map that was included in that. So pre-beltline, I believe, if that's, if that's, for the rest of you, like me, a standard way to orient yourself. But you can see, you know, generally, the urban core of Raleigh, the downtown area as, and then up along Capitol Boulevard, which was and still is fairly industrial in places as a major commercial areas, as well as other nodes, there's Five Points, Cameron Village, there's, you know, the New Bern Avenue Pool Road. So not, not too dissimilar from what we think of now, and we, if you have ever studied the urban four map that's in place today with the growth areas in places. And then advocating for the creeks being and park space and open space. And you can see the fairly big portion of state-owned land, so this is all what is now Centennial Campus and CSU main campus, and all the state-owned lands out by the museum block. And everything else is just called residential, which in the mind of this plan was ideally single-family homes. The next major one, 1979 Comprehensive Plan, a much more comprehensive version of a comp plan, which was also, I was a little bit surprised, pretty progressive even for today's standards. So references that we should have human dignity and to have racial integration of neighborhoods. So a lot of the ideas, I think, would fit with a comp plan if we were to write one From the land use point of view, a bit of an evolution, so this idea, again, some of the language seems pretty contemporary in terms of growing where you can service from utilities and city facilities point of view, revitalizing the urban core. The main, the main land use idea that this plan has was something called nodes, neighborhood nodes. So a little bit of a step more towards mixed use, although from a, from a nodal point of view, not really in an individual development or site or parcel point of view. So the idea being you would have some, some neighborhood services and commercial surrounded by more residential, and then there's these sort of like tiered structures of collecting those nodes together. So starting to think a little bit beyond, you know, we need to spread out and think more about uses closer to where people live, but not a fully really mixed use idea, the way we think of it today, when we talk about like TOD, for example, or even within a, within a building or within a block, a step closer to that, but not nearly all the way there. This plan, however, is a great point in time if you're interested in actually the existing land use on the ground. So historically, plans in Raleigh, once we got beyond the 51 plan, which really focused on just the urban core, divided the city up into these districts, all the way up until even the plan before the one we have now. And there are these great existing land use maps for all the districts. I just have a couple on the screen here. You can see this is downtown and east Raleigh. And again, I think fairly recognizable for people living in Raleigh today, so a lot of commercial downtown. This one does call out state lands also, that sort of green color as separate. We don't, we don't do that as much today, we, you know, if it's a state office, we generally think of it as an office.
Excuse me, Ira, I'm sorry to interrupt, just a point of reference, can you probably highlight, maybe everyone can't see, but can you give like a, so people can understand what, what we're seeing in terms of like?
Yeah. So the easiest one for me always is Capitol Boulevard, which comes down from the north here and splits into Dawson McDowell. This green square in the middle is the Capitol Building, and so this not quite a road is Fayetteville Street, and then this thicker east-west corridor is New Bern Avenue. So Chavis Park is, is down here on Southern, Southern End. And I think this is St. Og, the, the big yellow square, I believe. But even, so at the time, still fairly, most things called single-family residential, there's a little bit of multifamily sprinkled here and there. But not very dissimilar from an existing land use map from today. And as another, this one has the beltline for a bit of an easier reference, but this is the southeast, most of which here is marked as vacant, but very little commercial, which is fairly typical for all the other districts. But this is a great plan, so this, this have, these maps for all around it, also some pretty sweet pictures from the 70s, if anyone wanted to ever scroll through some of those. So I think from a point in time, if you were really interested, this is the best I could offer in terms of like what land use was, you know, from roughly 40 years ago. And then the next significant one was in 1989. So a lot of it, the language, pretty similar to the one, the one before it, the one from the 79? Yeah, 79. Some of it even, it had that nodal concept of land use, basically, although it didn't call it that anymore, and was moving even further towards thinking of like true mixed use. So talked about striking a balance between urbanization and the appeal of low intensity development. So really that, like, single-family, low intensity from the 50s persisting, but giving way more and more to more of an urban mixed-use approach or thought process. And this, this, this version, this plan had an extreme amount of small area plans, so at least half the book, hundreds and hundreds of pages are small area plans and corridor plans, so really much more local-specific policies, did a lot more heavy lifting than they do today even. So in as much as there was a particular issue for a particular area, and the, the small area plan superseded the general book, there was a lot of that one in the 80s and 90s. This I, I included mostly just for fun, this is the state of GIS at the time, I don't expect you to read it, I just thought it was funny. The district idea persisted, so there are closer zoom-in inset of each of these, but Travis had some funny stories about case planners trying to figure out how to apply this map to a parcel. So luckily, we've come a lot further. But if you kind of squint and look far back, it kind of looks like the urban four map, sort of we have today, you know, marking thoroughfares and nodes of regional intensity. I think they're, they're pretty different in concept. A lot of the times, this has, all of these blue lines are residential thoroughfares, which we don't really label anymore, we, we label transit corridors and things, but a lot of the nodes of concentration are, I think, pretty similar. And I'm not going to go over the plan we use now, because you see that every, every other week. All that being said, that was just the official story of what I found in the plans, which was how the bureaucratic nerds like me would write about this stuff. While all that was happening, there were the other reasons that land gets developed the way it does, right? So private actions, including governance, and who could get a mortgage from which bank, that was all happening. There were policies at the federal level, both monetary policy and also big construction projects, like urban renewal, like you can see the difference between when and where 440 exists. And then certainly city actions where we chose to rezonate things, what we chose to annex and when, you know, all sorts of stuff. All that was happening to influence land use. I don't personally have a great chronicle of all that stuff, but I don't think the history of Raleigh is really too dissimilar. If you've read about land development history and the history of America, I don't, I don't think we are exempt from any of that stuff. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind, that what I showed you is what I had and what I could put on a slide, but definitely not the full picture, who got to say what went where and who got to live where. I just wanted to make that point. So moving now into the demographics of today, I pulled some data that we have collected from various places throughout the city. So the, between 2000 and 2018, we, city as a whole has grown, not quite double, but 70% growth. But really, has the, the makeup of that growth has diversified a lot more, and this is true basically in every city in America. So the, the white category in the, in the census grew the least in terms of over time. So in terms of run numbers, certainly increased with everybody, with the rest of the city, but in terms of a share, increased the least. And so this is a little bit of maybe an easier picture to look at. I'll say that the two or more race category didn't exist in the 2000 census, but even between 2010 and 2018 was a, was a big gain too. And you can see, you know, the, the non-white population changed from about, whatever was that, 77% in 2000, or something closer to like 43%. So still a majority white city, but certainly changing as we've been growing. The Housing and Neighborhoods Department produces a document every five years for, to satisfy the Department of Housing and Neighborhood, sorry, Housing and Urban Development. And as part of that, they do an analysis identifying what's called racial and ethnic concentrated areas of poverty. I think it's a pretty useful demographic tool to use in, in other ways, but this is a picture of where those were. So in the, the metrics for this is any census tract that has 50% or more non-white, and that in this case is either non-white or Hispanic, technically different things, but combined into this analysis. And also a 30% or higher rate of poverty, household poverty. So the, the, this version was from 2020, there was a previous version in 2017, which had the census tract identified as, as RCAPs, did change in that time. But generally, in south, around downtown and southeast Raleigh, these were the tracts identified as that. So if you're thinking about areas with the highest degree of non-white people and highest degree of poverty. Now that does include NC State, so you know, student household probably doesn't have a lot of income, we generally don't focus too much when you're talking for the point, purpose of housing in neighborhoods and where they should spend money, aren't really going to invest their HUD, their federal dollars in NC State, but you know, technically that pops up in the, when you do the, the math for the entire county. But these are where those are. And then like I say, I think it's, it's real helpful to compare those, if you think of those tracts from a real general point of view, as the places that most need housing assistance and other programmatic assistance, and compare those tracts to the rest of the city. So there's a lot going on this chart. For example, adjusted for inflation, we're, we're just about back to where we were in 2000 for household income, which is pretty sad. But generally, for comparison, you know, the RCAP areas, income is much lower, right? That's, shouldn't be a surprise if you're looking for areas where the poverty rate is the highest, the income rate by definition is going to be the lowest, but a pretty substantial difference. So in the, the average, or the median household income for the tracts averaged together, less than half of what the household income for the city overall. And what, and what I personally think is, when you're thinking of housing policy, the most useful actual like single data point to use, which is cost burden. Again, no real surprise, the households that make the less can afford housing the least, so the high, highest rates of cost burden, you know, if you earn less than $50,000 in your household, you know, more than half of those people, more than half of those households are cost burden, which means paying more than 30% of that income towards housing costs. And then once you get above that threshold, that 50% or more, it drops, you know, in order of magnitude, so we're talking like single-digit percentage numbers. Not a, not a real big difference between RCAPs and non-RCAPs here, which I think obviously also generally makes sense, but. All those things came from, we didn't make new demographic charts and run new statistics for you. The Planning Department publishes the data book every year. The RCAP is from the, what's called, a document called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, that's, as the neighborhoods publishes, but they also publish a consolidated plan, which is, they do every five years, and outlines how they're going to spend, how they plan to spend their federal, federal grants for the next five years. So again, these links in, in Board Docs, and are generally great sources for statistics, all sorts of different statistics and demographics. And finally, question about rezoning and recent action and rezoning and development. For a baseline, the majority of the land area in the city is residential only, so one of the R districts, R2 through R10, you know, 64% still of our city in terms of acreage is residential only, and about a quarter is mixed use, which is the, the bulk of our commercial zoning. And that's been the case for a long time. This, this chart shows the, the cases we've, the rezoning requests we've processed since 2014. So if you felt busy in 2020, that was, was not in your imagination, it was a record year, even compared to 2019, which was a record year. But I think, you know, one thing to look at on the slide, that, that residential, so that top yellow bar, still a pretty big portion of our rezoning, I think, judging just visually, still the biggest request is still in our district. So a lot of reasons for that, you know, but we regulate townhouses and apartments in R10, for example, differently than every other residential district. So still a lot of appetite for residential development, I think this, this chart is showing clearly in the city. Another interesting thing is the downtown category, which is the, the dark maroon bar towards the, I said, in the past two calendar years, also a lot of downtown rezonings. So people already with downtown zoning wanted to go taller or remove a condition or something, and a little bit to expansion of the boundaries of downtown, although that's, doesn't usually happen. Thing has happened recently. This is a snapshot of a map that you can find from the current development activity page, this is public, and shows rezoning cases, so the white, the white Z's are all active cases now, and then the reds and the greens are ones from the past couple of years. I don't remember how many years before a case falls off this map, of either approved or denied or withdrawn cases, as the case may be. So you can see, you know, like, I don't think of relative, of any strong pattern of where people are rezoning, I think people rezone for all sorts of reasons, it's not always moving from residential to commercial or increasing your density a lot, can be for all sorts of reasons, so they happen all over the city pretty regularly. Like this are the, even more of those dots, so these, these dots go all, this is every rezoning case since 2014. On top of the shading, which is like by a census tract, how many cases have been in that census tract. So again, not a, not a strong pattern, I mean, you can see sort of on the beltline, a lot of activity, this is around Crepey Valley Mall, compared to just inside the line with the lowest category, so, and a huge constant, a big concentration downtown too. So again, just, I think the story of this map is that there's rezonings all over the place for all sorts of reasons. And because of the very strange way North Carolina allows you to add conditions to your rezoning, hard to tell just from the fact that something has been rezoned, what the actual difference is or why. What is a little bit easier to look at is permit, building permit activity. So again, building permit, I think in this dataset can be anything, can be new construction through renovation, but generally, I think that the urban core has seen more, so inside the beltline has had more permanent activity since 2014 than the fringes, for whatever reason that may be. So not really correlated with rezoning much at all, I don't think. And that's all I have, we have sort of other slides, should you wish to, to talk about other, other questions. I really try to, to keep it to answering the, the questions from the chairperson for the formal presentation. I'd be happy to, to answer any questions about that or what we talked about last time.
Hi there, Nicole? I'm, I'm sorry. That's okay, we're informal here, I can be Nicole. Thank you, Ira, that was, that was very informative and some really cool graphics. I was trying to take notes as you were going through. One of the, I guess I have a couple questions. One of the things that would be interesting to see would be those last few maps that you did showing the location of rezonings, it would be interesting to see that in the context of the slide you presented that showed the, the number of rezonings and the type of rezonings. I guess what I'm saying is it would be helpful, I think especially as we're trying to have these equity discussions, to see the type of rezoning by to see the type of rezoning by location. So you showed that in 2019, whatever the last year of rezonings that you showed was, you showed that, that there was still a substantial number of residential rezoning requests. So it would be nice to see where they are on the map that you had, you know, showing the districts.
Sure.
Because then that would give, I guess, well, I don't want to say credibility, but it would allow us to more confidently make statements like, oh, well, it seems like you're concentrating multifamily developments in this district. Or it seems like single family development is being concentrated in this district. And that's leading to inequities in X, Y, and Z. So I think if, if we could see that, especially with regard to the, like the cost burden information you were showing or the income information. I think all of that together tells a really good story. And it really, I, I know you all are working on, you know, how to incorporate equity in the staff report. But I think if, if we had that type of information in the interim, you wouldn't even have to necessarily make any judgment call for us, because I think it would be right there before us. And we wouldn't be guessing, well, it seems like this area is X, Y, and Z. If we could see, you know, 85% of the multifamily rezonings are occurring in this area. And this number of cost burden households are in this area. I think it, it just sort of flows from there and we could have those discussions without sort of guessing about what we're talking about.
Sure. Yeah. So I think certainly some of that, like I say, the, the, the general zoning case viewer is public. So you can see where they all are right now and like who the case planner is. I think we can, adding more information to a map like that or that actual map in terms of like what the request is. So, you know, a layer with, that will actually color them based on what the district they're asking for might be. Certainly is doable. I would say we certainly have the technical capability of making maps with other census data in them. I think we, we generally think carefully about what maps we make public with other people's information. Particularly, you know, if we do processing on census data. You know, we're not your source for census data. However, I would say that we, so we've talked last time in the last committee meeting about modifying the staff report. And we were making progress with that. What we've done, a couple of dry runs, the case planners have written about cases in the works and the new section that we've drafted. And that includes a lot of data and tables and things. So for our own purposes, we're making those maps for us to more easily and efficiently write that part of the staff report. So if that winds up being, you know, like snippets of a map for each case or something that we can share with you, that might be more helpful. I think when we, when we are ready to bring forward that section of the staff report and we show it to you and whatever, it's full of a bunch of tables that you say, can you, can this be a map or all that kind of vetting? I think that's doable. So, so some combination between us showing you the map in a staff report in like a static way of a, just the bounds of a case and stuff we can put on a, on a web map that you can look at yourself. I think those are great requests that we would be happy to, to work on.
Thank you. Oh, man. Yes. The other thing I was going to say was it's, it's always really interesting to look at this type of development within the context of transportation. And how, for example, once interstates start being built, how the land use patterns changed and how the demographics may have changed. And to look at the neighborhoods, how certain neighborhoods were affected when interstates were built. Some neighborhoods got better access, some neighborhoods lost access completely and became little islands. And I think that, that tells a story too. I mean, I don't know that that's necessarily anything that you would have to show, but it's just interesting to see how, how all of this development happened in response to what happened after urban renewal and just some of the, the transportation changes that were occurring as well.
Yeah. And some were completely destroyed.
Yes.
And no longer exist.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go next. The slide that you had, I can't remember the correct initials, but it was the poverty map that you had showing majority African-American spaces at 30% poverty rate. And you said that was the 2020 map that you have. Okay. And underneath it was based on information from 2013, 2017. Based on information. I understand that this is what you used for 2020, but it, and I understand it takes a while.
Sure. No, sorry. So that, that's a document, like I say, called Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. That was completed in, in 20, 2015 was the, was the time, the last time it was completed. And that had, was American Community Survey, so census data probably up through 2013 or 14 or whatever was the most recent available. And then the one that was just done last year was similar. So a five-year difference in between the data sets. Generally, American Community Survey data lags behind a year or two, depending on what time of year you're doing the report. So like they do the, they, like the 2020 census is done in 2020. They don't start releasing the data until 2021, you know, and they have a schedule. But I think the, the, the same consulting firm did the report five years apart. One of the benefits was that, was that, of that was that they compared the change over those five years. So while the data does lag each time, because you have to wait for the, the federal government to release it.
Right. Well, my concern is not necessarily the lag, because that is understandable when you have to gather the information. I, I just wanted to know where I can find it to find a fuller history, because when we're Raleigh specifically, when you had the housing crisis that started in 2008, what, what was that impact? In terms of housing in various communities? And then also looking at it, when Raleigh started hitting all of these top five lists, starting in 2000. Migration that then came into Raleigh to see how these been changed. How designated as growth, like growth areas or hotspots? And how we see communities that now, that, the, there's the change that we see, the gentrification that we're seeing. So I understand that that's the 2020. So I just wanted to find out where, where we could also see the map to see the progression over the 20-year time period, since we've seen such vast growth and development? And what that meant in these various pockets? Were there any changes in, in communities, maybe to the north? Not the north, yes, in the northern part? And what were the changes towards the, the southern? So I can find that the American Community Survey data, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So the, the raw data comes from the census. I think not the easiest thing to use for historical stuff.
And just, so for me in terms of, and, and I appreciate this was a wonderful question. Thank you. It was very helpful. And also just going forward and looking at it, seeing the, the, the difference between 1792 and 2020 is great, but I'm also, but also looking, I think more so when Raleigh began to shift. When we're seeing the issues, not issues, when we're seeing the cases that we're seeing now, the frequency, where they're located and not just the fact of zoning, but also going back to demographics. The places that were considered 30% poverty, because I was actually, there were some areas I was surprised not to see. But it's all, but those, those demographics are also changing. Like around Long Rock Quarry and Biltmore. The Biltmore Hill area, that kind of thing. So just say, just have been made, not just by rezonings, but by demographics.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can do some more. If there were some in particular points of census data or other data and time periods that you're interested in.
I'll open it to the group.
Some group, organization, I don't think it was APA, recently did a gentrification map. And as I recall, I think you could put your city in there and see the fastest growing gentrifying areas. And they had, it was based on certain criteria. I, I feel like I've saved it someplace. I, I'm going to look and see if I can find that. And if I can, I'll send it to you all. And Ira, that might be, it, it was, it was a, like a tool that you could use. Not just static maps, you could put in your city and it would, you know, it would pull it up for you. So if I can find that, I'll send it to you. That might be something that would be a, a useful resource for us without you having to try to reinvent the wheel, because it's already there. I'm trying to remember, it was some national group that did it, and I think it was within the last year or so. So I'll look for that and I'll send it.
Think you may be referring to enterprise communities as a mapping tool like that. You can, Raleigh is included among the cities you can map. And it has three different academic definitions of gentrification from which to choose.
That sounds right, Ken. Thanks.
Yeah. I'll also say there's a, there's a company called PolicyMap, which I'm now looking to see how far back their, their data goes, but easier to use than any census mapping tool that I think that's, that I've ever tried to use directly from the census. And there is some, some stuff is, you have to have an account, but there is a lot that is public. Particularly any, any of the data that they, that they have that's public data, I think, is in the, available in the public maps. But there's quite a lot of stuff, even beyond the census. So they have sources from other public data sources. I don't know how great they are for the history, so picking, picking up data points further back in time. I know when I used to do a lot of that work, there was another website where I would download basically the Excel spreadsheets and make my own maps. So if, if there was, you know, going back to whatever, starting from the seventies of certain parts of Raleigh and certain data that you wanted to see, I think we could, we could try to do that. Doesn't sound like a crazy request for staff. But I mean, there's a lot to it. So if there was like a part of town or a certain, certain, certain metrics you wanted to see.
Yes, by no. We have a report, I believe it's from 1970 called Raleigh Neighborhoods that captures a very comprehensive snapshot in time of city demographics. And over the years, we have done some comparisons of what city demographics look like now compared to that snapshot. And we can, that's something we could bring back to the committee, I think, would get at what you are interested in. You cited, I think, 2008 Commissioner Winters. But I think frankly Raleigh has been growing since, really since 1945 at a pretty remarkable pace. But I think going back to the seventies gets us a good, pretty good. I'm like you, I'm a Raleigh native, you know, Raleigh's more than twice the size it was when I graduated high school. So the, just the growth that has happened in our generation is remarkable.
And I also said about when we started hitting all of these national lists, I think people were looking at us maybe for the RTP. And it was, maybe it was a, a, a great secret, but when you start getting all these lists and you start the migration.
Yeah.
When I began, what you're saying about it has always been grown.
Well, I think going back to the seventies would get us, going back to the seventies would get us back before the lists. I don't think the lists existed until like the nineties. It's just like a media construct, right?
What is it? The next bill that they will come? Hold your hand. I'm sorry, Commissioner McIntosh.
Yeah, I was wondering, in the demographic, I knew you were talking to me. In the demographic data you guys were talking about, would that include rental versus ownership? Because I think that's, and I, I know when I've asked about this before, it seemed like that might be difficult to gather. But I think that might be part of what we're talking about too.
Yeah, I don't remember if that's included in the 1970 report. I would, I would have to look at that more closely. I just, I know based on the analysis we have done more recently, that the city is more integrated than it was in 1970. And that but despite that, there are still concentrations of different kinds of, of different kinds of population. And those, those patterns are, that there are historical patterns that you can still see in how, where different populations are located.
I, I was just thinking along with what Commissioner Winters was talking about with shifts maybe associated with, you know, recent growth in Raleigh where we're seeing gentrification. There might also be a shift going on between rental and ownership. In, I guess I don't know enough about it to know for sure, but there, it seems like there might be some of those areas might be shifting as well. In concert.
And there is one more thing I'd like to add to that. When speaking of equity, about the gentrification, we're looking at it, I'm also seeing it as in terms of which areas are bearing greater challenges and in greater magnitude in, in city. If, if it's environmental challenges, things like, things like that have been zoned or planned. And to, to actually see that, I'm thinking off the top of my head, because I lived there in South Park with the, what was the Alpo factory off of Hammond Road? About the, the solid waste facility. Challenges like that and where they are located that also gets to the inequity within Raleigh, because you see them in various areas, so to see how that's been plotted and what has been allowed.
Yeah, I think environmental justice is certainly on our radar when we're talking about this stuff. I think part of the challenge, I'm sorry, please. Part of the challenge of doing that and comparing that over time is that we just didn't go like data about that in the past. We didn't care as much about the environment. So for, I mean, there's sort of two sides of this conversation, which is going over the history and why we are where we are. Which is very important. But to some degree, you know, can be thought of a little bit separately as to like, well, what should we do right now and moving forward? And so I think some of these things are easier to slot into, like, how should, how should you all think about a request that comes across the table today? And so environmental justice is probably more that second one, which is like, where are the, where are the, the point source polluters? Or, you know, whatever. And we have databases for that today, the EPA tracks that, among other people. Or, you know, whatever, and we have databases for that today, the EPA tracks that, among other people. And also just anecdotally, we know where certain things are in the city. Um, probably not as easy to compare over time as like housing tenure, like Commissioner McIntosh was talking about. Like the, the census tracks owners and renters, and I can go back decade after decade, and show you that. I'm not confident that the same sort of thing exists for pollution. People in the fifties didn't think of pollution as a thing, but.
Right, I'm not necessarily talking of have found to be challenged now, for instance, in, I know this is Raleigh, but Holly Springs, there is a site there, uh, a waste site there that is now a challenge for, for residents who then bought, but it wasn't there, say, ten years ago. So just plotting that and then who's around those areas, that, that, that's more so an anomaly because that existed prior to residential versus residential being existence and then industrial being rezoned in areas like that. Um, and I don't know how we can, how we can see this. Uh, but it's also about in terms of green space and what that means in terms of trees and the density of trees and quality of oxygen versus being, and you have heard me say this before, asphalt and concrete, no, it's shingles and concrete. What is being permitted and if we should take a stronger look in various areas where there has, where there is not as much green space allotted? And maybe pushing for during rezonings that is not just the the city's minimum requirement because of the lack of, in a specified area. So getting it with in that lens, there, there are various lenses, so looking at it in different ways, if this is making sense.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I think one, one thing we've been talking about, you know, whenever we are thinking of adding something to the staff report, um, there's a real danger of the, the thing just gets longer and longer and longer and less and less and less useful. Like the more that's in it, almost the less, the less that's in it, if you follow. So however, I think there is some stuff that's in it today that people probably don't notice as much. Um, for example, parks always tell us the, the distance to a local park. And they have done a lot of great work, like rethinking how they think about access to parks over the past couple of years. Um, and so their model is they have a pretty complicated GIS model about how, how, how could you actually physically walk, you know, from your house on a sidewalk to a park? And they have, that's how they're trying to plan. Um, so it could be their stuff that's in there that we need to reframe or make a little bit more obvious. Um, or data that other parts of the city have that we want to share. So I think that's great feedback, Commissioner Winters, that like I think when we've, when, when we've been thinking about the, the environmental justice portion of the new equity section, we have been thinking of sort of traditional, um, you know, industrial uses or sites on the EPA list or whatever, and not really so much about, about parks and trees. So I think that, that was good to hear, to maybe go back and think about. We, reframing what we have already or asking our friends in other departments for, for more of what I know they have made for us.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes.
I had a question slash comment maybe for the group, you know, one topic that um we haven't talked about kind of in all these layers of um looking at equity is level of education or ex, you know, kind of what's the yeah, what's the level of education in some of these areas and how it relates to um income and ownership and rental? Um, I don't know if that, that topic interests any, anyone on the committee or if that's even accessible information. It'd be, I really liked the idea of having some access to, to um interactive maps that we can kind of plug stuff in to process some of this and get a better understanding. And it would be, it, I don't, I don't even know if this is possible, but to kind of see maps that have the layers kind of turned off and on to, you know, where you can kind of flip through gentrification, environmental changes, um, owners versus renters, um, kind of where interstates um have been developed and um income demographics. It's just a thought.
I remember when I chaired the CAC, um, Housing and Neighborhood created um some kind of map and it had that information in terms of education as it related to the various um CAC districts. So I don't think that you pulled it corresponded to um income, but I just remember specifically seeing the educational component. And uh, vice chair, excuse me, vice chair, vice chair, I think that's a great point because I think the other part that we sometimes overlook and not to diminish any one, but is if you do not have the education, not, not saying in terms of being formal education, but having the knowledge base of what is happening, um, you don't know, you may not know the questions to ask. And that seems to be the more, um, again, um, not marginalized, but um susceptible communities that, that, that are experiencing a lot of, I think, because of failure to, to know the questions to ask to, in terms of advocacy, um, or even to know what's possible when we're looking at some of the uh conditions. When we look at the list of conditions, it comes from communities. There's a, there's a level of understanding of what's happening and that's not, um, that's not clearly conveyed across the city.
Thank you, um, that was a good clarification. And I think something uh that, that was interesting to me um in the discussion in downtown south was this idea of, of training the younger folks, youth, the people that are coming up. Um, and education and training kind of, you know, putting those together. And in terms of equity, you know, when uh, when land is developed to improve the city, you know, how are we impacting those that are there or around there? And how are they benefiting? And, and to me, it seems like a, a really powerful benefit is the ability to educate or train and have access to opportunity in, as a opportunity to those development, the development that's occurring, if that makes sense. And so I think that's another layer that, that could be useful information.
I, and I, I agree, I think, well, understanding, well, with this engagement part, I think that's where the whatever they're called now, whatever they're going to develop. I, I think it's good to know what the educational component is, but then sharing that, well, maybe to know what the educational component is, but I don't know if we can formally educate. I don't, and I don't know if that's something that we can do, I think we can be aware of, um, maybe the lack of understanding and maybe say, well, maybe go back, put it, put it on the, the zoning, the developer to go and to make sure that there's an education there versus this is what it is, this is what we're doing, speak, speak, build, building with communities as opposed to talking at communities.
Yeah, and I'm talking about, um, in addition to that, this is like, would be a different topic, sort of like income dem- demographics, level of education demographics as a way of, as we look at rezonings, you know, um, how do we encourage equitable development? So if there's these large projects that are, you know, bringing a lot of prosperity to an area in terms of providing training and education or, or ways of um offering employment opportunities, things like that, you know, um, having an understanding, I don't know, I'm not saying this very articulately. I, I have a feeling what we're gonna see is that uh access to um improved income through education or training is not uh for the folks that are being displaced in some of these areas that are being, being developed. That trajectory is not going up for the people that exist there now. Although it's bringing employment opportunities and, and prosperity to new folks coming into that location, does that make sense? And so is that a helpful tool to be able to somehow in the future encourage equitable development by um using that criteria as um as, as a component of, of assessing how land is developed, does that make sense? So I think, I guess I'm kind of thinking about, you know, um, in larger projects, maybe conditions that are offered, you know? And so how can we have the tools we need to, to encourage development happening, uh, cases, including conditions that would encourage opportunity for everybody in those areas that are getting developed? Does that make any sense?
I think that's it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure that I agree that educational data would necessarily be useful, but I think it ties in with a concern I have, I think part of what you're getting at is something I'm concerned with, which is, you know, we saw the, was it the nineteen seventy-nine plan where they had these visions of nodal development, where the centers of development were um serving the community around, serving the surrounding community, and that's kind of evolved into the mixed-use centers that serve the surrounding communities in our current future land use plan. And um, it seems like those mixed-use centers get developed differently in different areas of town, so some areas of town, it's truly mixed-use. And some areas of town, it seems like those locations um sometimes end up just being a single use that's dense, but not necessarily serving the community, which I think ties in with what Tika was talking about, is when a development goes in, is it something that the existing um residents? Is, is it gonna improve the neighborhood for the existing residents or is the goal purely monetary? And I know we don't really have control over that, but um, it just seems like there's kind of a disconnect between the vision of the comprehensive plan and how development actually occurs, and is there something we can do to help encourage development to be more in line with the vision of the comprehensive plan?
Thank you, that was a lot more articulate.
Hey, I'm looking at the time, are, over our hour, I'm sorry, forgive me, Commissioner, I just saw your hand. No, no, please, it's three minutes, we've gone an hour and a half before, go ahead.
I was just, um, thank you, um, I was trying to, to process what Commissioner Hicks was saying in the context of, of what, the, the larger discussion. And um, I agree that it's valuable information. But I think we have to be careful how we use it or how we interpret it. For example, Commissioner Hicks mentioned downtown south, so if you think about downtown south, the um, I don't want to say the argument, but the, the, the point that was put forward by the applicant was that they are offering this access to training that may, to these, to the existing residents. Uh, what I'm saying is our words may be able to be used in a way that we don't necessarily want it to be. Um, because, just because a big development is coming, it could be offering absolutely the opportunity and the access to training that we're saying is a good thing, particularly if the demographics look a certain way. But that could be outweighed by the, what we perceive, I guess, as the um not beneficial aspects of the development. So that's, that's why I was looking puzzled as you were talking, it wasn't that what you were saying didn't make sense, I think it does make sense. And I think it's important to understand that, that as well, but I think in terms of how we use it, we might end up forcing ourselves to support something that we might not necessarily want to, if we're, if that's the criteria that we're using. So I, I just think we have to be careful um as we lay out the criteria that um we're able to use it in a way that um, I don't know what I'm trying, I don't think we should develop the criteria to get what we want necessarily. But I think we should lay out the criteria in a way that we can objectively say, you know, this is what we're looking at, we think this will benefit, we think this area needs this versus, oh, we just locked ourselves into having to support something that we really don't want to, but we set the criteria and it's meeting the criteria, if that makes sense.
You, Commissioner Bennett. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Hicks.
I just wanted to say thank you for this conversation, it's, um, at least for me personally, it's um both content challenging and also just, it's a difficult topic to negotiate and talk about, some things are a little uncomfortable. And, and so I just appreciate the conversation and the dialogue and the discussion that we're having here. I think it's important step to, to moving to the next steps and, and to getting to a place that's productive.
Yes, Ira.
Yeah, thank you, um, I agree, I mean, it, it, I don't want anyone to think that um having that type of back and forth and sort of different perspectives is unproductive. The conversation that just happened, um, has, has happened almost exactly at, from staff, when we've been trying to think about how, how to talk about this too. So I think that's just, um, you're thinking precisely the same way we have been, which is like, what data would be helpful um to actually make a decision, and then like, what's the consequences of including that in, in an official staff report? How are people, other people besides us gonna use it? All those questions are great, I would say, don't stop thinking about that when we actually get that new equity section in front of you. Um, that's precisely, I think, what you should think about when you read it. We, I was just looking, you know, we tried to make, make a table of um, just quantify as much as we could displacement risk. And, you know, percent of individuals, educational attainment made, made that, made that list for us. So I think, you know, we had agreed to some degree, at least with Commissioner Hicks's thinking, when thinking about the existing neighborhood and, among other things, like cost burden, people who rent, you know, racial, we had educational attainment on there too. So not an outrageous idea by any means, but certainly not necessarily for sure should be there. But I would just like to, to echo that, that this is precisely, I think, where you should be and where you should, the type of things you should be thinking and the lines of thought you should be thinking. When, and would be helpful for us when you actually get this report, or new, new section of the staff report. I think about what's in it and what we included and what we didn't and all that, all that stuff.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, um, Ira, uh, everyone, thank you for the conversation, I just got a note. Okay, um, it, okay, so it seems as though we have another viewer, but it's unconfirmed, they want to make a statement, so it's a meeting, so if you want to make a statement, this is the time to indicate that you want to do so. Go on, one.
Mr. Twitty, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line, but um I didn't have a statement, I just wanted to view the meeting, it was a great meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Okay, well, everyone, our time today, um, again, it was a great conversation. Uh, our chair, Matt Tomasulo, has said that in the last few months, we have been really having great station that a lot out of us um helps uh planning, see how, how we're to the community at large, thank you for your today, for your conversation, I look forward to more conversation with you. Um, as I'm the next agenda, uh, please, some thoughts that you have to see on the agenda, that cannot give you this conversation in a month, okay? Okay, everyone. Okay, everyone still, is my? Okay, well, if there aren't any other questions, um, we will close this meeting today. Oh, and I'm sorry, hello, Commissioner Lam, thank you. Let's see you today. Okay.
Being late, our applications for affordable housing are due on Fridays.
Well, again, everyone, thank you, Ira. Thank you again for the great presentation. Bina, David, thank you all for being here and for, uh, putting this together for us. Uh, I will see you, uh, at our committee for the whole meeting. Okay? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.